My wife, Jennifer, and I have had our house here in Semiamo for 15 years, and it's been our permanent home for the last three. One of the major findings of the external review of the SRA is that our governing documents, the paper that outlines our responsibilities and authorities are complicated, disorganized, frequently out of date, or incomplete relative to modern standards and technology. Many of our rules, standards, policies, and procedures are embedded in the CCNRs, originally written 30 years ago. The CCNRs are deliberately hard to change and require votes of the entire community. They're therefore difficult to change or update in a timely fashion. We have an incomplete and difficult-to-access set of rules, regulations, and policies. Let me give you an example related to the ASC, since I have the most experience with that part of the SRA. A few weeks ago, my wife asked a question about the definition of "significant tree", which is an important concept in determining what trees can be removed for construction or at the request of an SRA member. She wasn't very happy when I told her that there are at least four different documents that reference the definition and that there are two different definitions of significant tree. That created only a minor domestic disturbance for us, but it can lead to significant difficulties when a dispute over tree removal with a contractor and homeowner, a new homeowner, is underway. This leads to confusion and inconsistency in enforcement actions. Since most of the rules the ASC enforces are in the CCNRs, the committee has very little discretion or flexibility in enforcement. Compliance processes are likewise cumbersome, lengthy, convoluted, and impractical. And you've heard it over and over again. The changes in the CCNRs require a vote of the entire community, so it takes a long time. In the 2019 survey of the community, concern was expressed about inconsistency, fairness, and equity in ASC decisions. The situation with incomplete, inconsistent, and hard-to-search documents is a major contributing factor to that, and it infects many aspects of SRA function. Fixing this problem across the entire organization is therefore a high priority for the SRA and the highest priority for the Governance Committee. Substantial, well-justified changes to the CCNRs will be brought forward to the SRA community for voting at the Annual General Meeting. I have the next slide. So again, to look forward, we want to see, as Doug explained, well-revised CCNRs, policies, procedures, and rules that are responsive to the community and can be updated relatively easily. Alignment of the neighborhood homeowners' associations in the SRA, and all of this requires a lot of document work. Staff, directors, and committee members who are appropriately trained to do that work and keep it up to date, and a more friendly, a user-friendly website, and better technology for the staff and membership to interact with the association. And now Helen Warley, the head of the Elections Committee, is going to discuss the election situation.
Thank you, Steve. I think I'm unmuted, and I have... I should be there. By way of background, I began I began in Country Club Villas and moved to that now famous Presby Village in the year 2000, in December 2000. I just want to add to what Doug Wood said. The work party, I did some pictures of them on the weekend, but he didn't mention that the paparazzi was our mid-90-year-old resident. I don't think our five- and six-year-olds were out there, but it was a real community thing. It's a great little spot to live. The Election Committee was always referenced in the bylaws and narrowly focused on elections to the Board. Over time, all sorts of things were established, but nothing was approved formally. So the Election Committee is now a formal chartered committee, and we have the responsibility for initiating and conducting all association elections for the Board, for the budget, for Steve's massive CCNR package that you'll be getting in the fall. We're in the process of finalizing a detailed elections manual, and that will be out fairly shortly. Now, our Board, the composition of our Board, was deliberately set to ensure there are always new voices. The terms are staggered to make that happen. That's the regular way of doing business. And then, of course, there are vacancies that happen. And as you know from reading SRA This Week, looking at the notices on your gates, there are two vacancies right now. Well, I am delighted to let you know that five people have stepped up to run for these two vacancies. That election is going to take place at Thursday's regular meeting of the Board of Directors. You can join on Zoom. And the two people elected will be immediately seated as directors. But wait, there's more. There's another opportunity for you to participate. But I'm really sorry about the reason. And you read in SRA This Week what that is. Paul Greenow has had to resign from the Board because of health issues. With a long career in public service in the State Department, as a member here of our Blaine City Council, and as a member of our Board, Paul has been a stalwart. Thank you for all that you have done for us, Paul. So that means, to you who are watching, if you've been an owner and resident for six months and one day, are able to attend 75% of the Board meetings, and want to contribute to the SRA through this service, please contact Justine at the SRA office. She'll let us, the Election Committee, know of your interest, and we'll proceed from there. So thanks to the five who stepped up. Good luck on Thursday, and we're moving forward. And now I turn it back to our President, Alec Berkman.
Thank you, Helen. Appreciate your involvement. And thank you to all the Board. This is a fine bunch of people. Teams are built not just out of people who are working together, but they are built and held together with trust. So where are we here? Seems the SRA has evolved over time, but it seems that perhaps our knowledge and our skills and our capabilities and our documentation and our processes have not kept up with that growth. We brought a team in to help us diagnose the problem and propose solutions. And we wanted them to help with both governance and management. We were stepping all over each other. We had people telling people everything that they should be doing, and then somebody else telling them they should be doing something else. One of our goals is to make our priorities, our combined priorities, visible for everybody. We're near the completion of the management, or the, let's call it, the consulting contract. It ends at the end of this month. The Board has no plan to renew it. We are not going to renew the contract. And in fact, Joint Partners has told us they need to move on to other clients, and they have done the job they came here to do, which was to get us out of crisis. We are achieving the vision and the mission that Doug outlined, and we will require a very active partnership between the membership, the Board, committee governance, and the staff management to make this association the best residential resort community in the Northwest. As we work toward the vision and mission, we are asking the membership for their support. Yeah, it's an easy job to do when you know people understand where you're going and support that effort. It's a bit tougher when we have to fight windmills out there from time to time, but we're up to it. And with that, I'd like to just ping-pong it back to Helen, who is our acting sergeant-at-arms for this evening and the open session, and she will provide you with the rules.
Thank you, Alec. Yeah, I got this assignment. I will try to do my best to honor each one of you as you participate and make sure that there are opportunities for exchange for the answers. And I'm just going to read the rules. I'm following Paul's directions as to how he has done it. So, "The Town Hall shall be conducted as follows. If you've not already signed in via the chat, please sign into the Zoom public chat window with your name and address. No topic may be specified. Members will speak in the order in which they sign the list." Now, this section is really important. "Members will be given three minutes to speak. After all the members desiring to speak have spoken, earlier speakers may each have an additional three minutes for further non-repetitive comments. A speaker seeking a longer period of time can ask if someone else who has signed up to speak will yield his or her time so the speaker can continue. However, at no time will any member be allowed to use more than six minutes to speak. The member speaking is making a presentation, not conducting a discussion or debate. They shall not be interrupted by Board members or others in the audience. Attacks on Board members or fellow association members are not permitted, and profanity will not be tolerated under any circumstances. The Board President or designated Board member, that's me, will alert speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining to speak. At the conclusion of each presentation, the speaker may submit a written statement to the Secretary for to be recorded. Any written statement must be identical to what was presented. No additional material may be submitted. After a member speaks, Board members can ask questions of the member for clarification purposes, and the President of the Board or his designee may respond to the member." Now, Laurie, do we have some participants wishing to speak? I see Buzz's face up there. Could you tell me?
Certainly do, and Buzz Abercrombie is up first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buzz. Your time is now starting.
Mr. President, Board members, I would like to address two issues. First, the priority of the SRA as reflected by what it spends its money on. The second one is the cost of the joint partners' consulting work and the need for it. First, let's talk about the priorities. Proceeding last year's AGM, I co-signed an open letter with five other former SRA presidents expressing our concern about the 2021 priorities and that very expensive consulting would dip into the reserves and crowd out physical maintenance and improvements. Sadly, that concern is proving justified. The accomplishments described at the present, by the presentations in this meeting as well as the one from March 3rd describe practically only intangible process improvements. I was missing any tangible improvements of the physical assets of the SRA. More concerning, from actual spending and budgeting plans, it appears that maintenance, especially on the roads, is being deferred with all future consequences that will bring. I refer you to the mission statement recently published and its emphasis on maintenance of assets and, excuse me, common area is unclear to me where all this cost and effort that went into the policies, procedures, and charters, et cetera, fit into that mission. Second, let's talk about the cost versus the value received for all the work. My concern is that the cost of the work by joint partners is unreasonably high for what it delivered. Recently, I signed a petition to that effect, and I co-signed another open letter with 11 concerned SRA members asking for full transparency on part of the Board in regard to any deliberations and decisions concerning the joint partner contract extension. This is nothing unusual. This openness is required by Washington HOA law. It's worthwhile to note that two persons, all the co-signers of this letter, have served on or actively have served or are actively serving on the SRA Board, SRA Committees, or on Boards of Neighborhood Associations.
So I'm going to interrupt for one second, and that is to simply tell you that Joel Green has given you three minutes additional to speak, so I will start that now.
Thank you. They all have spent considerable time on the community. The reason I signed the petition and the open letter is twofold. First, let's look at how much is really necessary. In my view, the amount, detail, and prescriptiveness of the recently adopted policies and procedures is excessive for a small HOA like ours. It adds unnecessary layers of overhead and complexity, which will inevitably require additional personnel with its attendant cost, costs that does not contribute to the maintenance and preservation of the physical assets. Although I'm not a CPA, my view is informed by 15 years in senior financial management, concluding as Chief Financial Officer of a company many times the size of the SRA, and four years on the SRA Board. Secondly, did we get value for the money we spent? The output of joint partners is available for little or no cost, or at least to a significant extent, available for little or no cost on the Internet. Beginning with the findings presented during the ADM, that work is largely a checklist for an audit appropriate for large and complex organizations. So quick Googling yielded five sites where such a list could be obtained for free. Note, that was by no means an exhaustive search. If you did your own Googling, I'm sure you'd find many more. The same goes for the actual policies and procedures. There are several sites that sell software that includes templates for all financial and accounting procedures. You can either adopt the policy as written or use the software to adapt it to the extent you desire. As an example, the cost for a light version of this software is $275. And for $475, you have the full version. Gets better in the area of operational manuals, board and staff training manuals. There is plenty of material available to download for free. There was also a complete training program for HOA treasurer, all free. My take is that we went overboard on what we thought we needed and then overpaid for what we got. It's very unfortunate that all that money and time has been spent. We cannot turn the clock back, but we can stop making the hole deeper. We respectfully insist that the Board does not in any way continue or extend the consulting arrangement with joint partners.
Your time is now up. Your time is now up, Buzz. Thank you very much. Alec, would you like to ask a member of the Board to respond to Buzz's comments?
I would indeed. I would ask if Steve Geisels, would you respond to Buzz? If not, somebody else can.
No, Buzz, I appreciated the comments. You know, from the outside, right? I might look at the situation in almost a similar fashion. So that's why I was trying to represent in my comments that, and I've been around a lot of organizations. I was the president and chairman of the Beverly Hills Chamber of Commerce for many years. So I've been a part of large organizations, and I know value when I see it, right? I respectfully disagree. I don't think we could have Googled and found this information so easily or so impactfully as you might suggest. I'm just representing, only been on the Board three months, two and a half months, that what I've seen is valuable, right? Will it pay off in the end? I don't know. I said that in my comments as well. I don't, it's a lot of money, right? It's a lot of everyone's money here. Time will tell if this is going to pay off for us. But from what I've seen, it's valuable. Valuable from a Board of Directors perspective, and from what I've seen with the staff, with Debbie and her staff. I think the work has been very valuable.
Thank you, Buzz, and thank you, Steve. Do we have a next speaker?
Laurie, do we have any more speakers?
Dave Whitmore is up next.
Dave, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Dave. Your time is starting.
Okay. I have to do my thing a little bit abbreviated here. I'd like to expound on the concern that I had that I addressed in the March 3 Town Hall meeting with regard to the $2021 budget expenditure of $53,000 for accounting service. The only response I received on the March 3 comments was a terse "no way" to my request that consulting services be immediately terminated based on noncompliance with the terms of agreement. There was no response as to why terms of the consulting agreement were not met, nor any indication of accountability for nonconformism of the agreement. I also wanted to mention in support of what Buzz was talking about. I was on the Interim Finance Committee for a while, and the, it took me about 20 minutes using Google to put a charter together for the Finance Committee. There's literally 20 or 30 of them on the website, that HOA Finance Committee charters. And then we used, ran it by the Interim Finance Committee a few rounds, and we finally come up with a charter, submitted it to the Board for review. Joint Partners and Alec deleted some of the responsibilities for the Finance Committee associated with oversight of contracts, which I thought wasn't a good thing to do. But anyway, and that's what they submitted to the Board. What the Finance Committee put together was not submitted to the Board. But either way, it only took a few minutes to do that. So, and now I guess it's a model for a future, for some reason, it's a model for future charter. So hopefully, people doing charters won't spend a lot of time on these things. It shouldn't take more than a week. If you get a rounded-up committee put together, you should spend no more than a week putting a charter together, and then practice the charter. You know, come back a few months later and maybe revise it based on actual use. I also believe that, you know, I've done a lot of organization change and, is that my 30 seconds?
Yep.
Anyway, you know, typically, when you do a six-month organization change implementing a big project, you spend two months getting all your procedures and processes and people in place. You spend two months training everybody, and you spend too much looking, two months looking over their backs and making sure everything's fine tuned, so when you're done, you're done. This whole process has been totally backwards. All paperwork's done at the end versus the front.
Your time is done, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody on the Board like to speak to Dave's comment? If not, just thank him for the comment.
Laurie, I believe you said, is it Greg Went who is next on the list?
Yes, go ahead, Greg.
Greg?
So my comments are going back to the March 3 meeting from Kurt.
Your time has started.
Jennifer. Kurt, in the last meeting, you indicated that many of our restricted reserves were being used for things such as gate repair and fountain repair, et cetera. And in the past, all those were considered operational. So I now understand the comment that you made where the lines between the operational budget and the restricted reserve budget got blurred. And this has obviously been blurred by this Board. You've been, you're inconsistent even tonight on your slides in saying one thing, and your slides say another. Like you say, that half of our money is in restricted reserve, and yet if you look at $960,000, you only have 300K in restricted reserve at the end of 2021. That is not half. I object to the Board's consistent reduction in the amount of reserve they feel is necessary. The reserve is meant for roads, sewers, large projects that we are going to have to undertake in the future, and to be swapping out these funds for regular maintenance is unconscionable. Number two, there were a couple of comments made as to we used to go to the lowest cost whenever we went out for a bid on maintenance. Absolutely untrue. A committee was put together on major maintenance costs, and they were reviewed, and it was what we considered to be the best, not the lowest. So the only thing I have to say is that somewhere in this Board, it's become, the finances have become broken. I can't figure out why you, the Board members, are constantly trying to obfuscate what the budget is and what we're spending, and also why, if we have a budget, the Board isn't letting us vote on it per the requirements of Washington state law.
Thank you, Greg. Alec, are you going to direct an answer for that?
Kurt wants to respond to that.
Thank you, Kurt. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a little bit misunderstanding here. The slide said that we had $924,000, and half of that was restricted reserves. That's at the end of 2020. At the end of 2020, $538,825 is in the restricted reserves. That's a little bit more than one-half. Now, I grant you, we're going to spend quite a bit of money in 2021, and the restricted reserves will fall substantially to probably no more than $400,000. But I believe the information I presented was correct.
You made a misstatement right there.
Greg, there is no reply. Greg, there is no reply? Thank you.
Why could a Board member?
Because the Board, each person has the three minutes allotted time. Those are the rules. I am simply enforcing them.
Yeah, you can sign up for some more time later on, Greg.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Greg.
Laurie? Or we only have?
Hashimoto is the fourth speaker, and if she wants it, Pilar Whitmore has given her three minutes already.
Hello, April.
Hello, Helen.
So you're going, are you taking three, or I can't see you?
Oh, really?
There you are. Okay.
Okay.
All righty. And you have your three, and were you looking for some more? Because Pilar has.
Yeah, I think Pilar has offered me three minutes of her time.
Okay, so I'll put you to six.
Let me know when you're starting.
You start now.
Okay, my name is April Hashimoto. I live on Golden Island in Turnberry Wood. I have lived in Semiamo for 17 years, and I have an MBA and a CPA, which was earned while articling at Price Waterhouse. My career has been spent working as a finance executive at multi-billion, multimillion, and smaller organizations. My financial knowledge is current as I present. My financial knowledge is current as I presently work full-time as a chief financial officer. I would like to provide to everyone watching and listening a quick snapshot of my view of the SRA finances. My opinion on the financial health of the SRA differs from the presentation made by the board tonight. Any members listening may want to grab a pen so they can jot down some of the numbers I'm about to give you. I know that not everyone knows how to read and analyze a set of financial statements. So I'm going to summarize the financial state of the SRA using one simple understandable metric. How much cash do we have? I'm going to read out some numbers taken straight out of the financial statements for the SRA. Let's leave aside for the moment the debate over the categorization of cash into operating reserve and restricted reserve. Let's just look at total cash. As long as working capital is fairly stable, which is the case at SRA, cash is a reasonable metric to look at. Here are the total cash balances over the last three years and a forecast for cash at the end of this year. The only adjustment I have made that differs from Kurt's numbers is that I removed the $55,000 PPE loan from 2020 as it is a one-time adjustment. So if you've got your pen out, at the end of December 2018, we had total cash of $1,035,000. At the end of December 2019, we had total cash of $1,034,000. Not much of a change between the two years. At the end of December 31, 2020, we had total cash of 909,000. That's a drop of 125,000 in one year. When I take this 909,000 at the end of 2020 and I deduct the loss that's budgeted for 2021 of 111,000 and I deduct the 2021 budgeted reserve spending that was sent out with the voter material of 162,000, we are forecast to have total cash of 637,000 at the end of 2021. Total cash dropping by $397,000 from 1,034,000 at the end of 2019 to 692 at the end of 2021 is not a healthy financial trend in my view. How much further will cash drop before a dues increase is required to replenish these bank accounts? Here's some more numbers. The board presented to the membership at the 2020 annual meeting that the reserve was projected to be 144% funded at the end of 2020 and 85% funded at the end of 2021. These 144% and 85% numbers are straight out of the 2021 voter mailing material sent to the membership. The board further advised that 85% funded is still considered good. Maybe it is considered good if an HOA was underfunded and is building up its reserves and has gotten 85% of the way there. But is 85% funded good if it was 145% funded one year earlier? How much further underfunded does the reserve fund have to fall before it's not good anymore? And we, the members, are asked to pay more to fund the maintenance and replacement of aging infrastructure at SRA? You don't have to be a financial whiz to understand the story that these numbers tell. My final point is this. This board committed to listen harder while also asking for more involvement from the community. Well, we have provided that involvement that the board asked for. 651 members of this community, representing 371 households, signed a petition in five days to try to communicate with the board. So now I ask the members of this board to exercise their legal duty of care to the membership and to act in good faith in representing this community who is sending you a loud and clear message about how our SRA funds are spent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, April. Alec, who would you like to direct?
Anybody who would, on the board who'd like to speak? Kurt, you want to talk?
Kurt, you have three.
I, I don't disagree generally with what April presented. I accept that she took out the $54,800 that we received in 2020 as a PPP loan. Now, you may say, well, that's not members' money, et cetera, et cetera. But it is still something the board actively pursued. We got the loan. It is part of our finances and we do expect it to be forgiven. So that 54,000 will in fact add to the number at the end of 2020. So the ending cash in 2020 is not 909,000. It's 909,000 plus 54,800.
Thank you, Kurt.
If there's anybody else, Alec, we have 1 minute 57 seconds.
I, I don't see anyone else.
Okay.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, April.
Laurie, I understand that Peggy Richter is next on and that Donna Went has given her her three minutes. So Peggy, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I can see you. You have six minutes total, Peggy, and it starts now.
Thank you. We've heard that the board does not intend to renew or extend the joint partners contract. And Mitch has also said that his work is done. I think that's great news. I'm just hoping that that means that no more funds will be spent in any way on joint partners or any other consultants, whether through new contracts, employment arrangements, or otherwise. The membership has said loud and clear that they didn't want the SRA funds used for consultants in the first place. And we certainly don't want any more of our money spent for joint partners or any other consultants. I am concerned, as others have expressed, about the products and services actually received in exchange for the excessive fees that were charged by these consultants. As others have noted, most of these products are available at minimal cost and many are free. More importantly, the many policies and procedures recommended by joint partners and now implemented by the board have little actual value to the members. Maybe there have been improvements, but one of the things that the board considered, and I don't think it was ever adopted, which would seem ridiculous, was trying to restrict access to the SRA building. That's a building that we're paying for and we own. I mean, that just seemed like a ridiculous waste of time. I'm also listening to all these, all this talk again about all the risks we face. And as I said at the last Town Hall meeting, I'm not buying it. As I said before, one of the greatest risks that we faced came from the very consultants themselves. They're the ones who recommended charging a buyer transfer fee in violation of Washington law to be used to pay their own consulting fees. It would be reasonable to pay, to, to, to expect that anyone holding himself out as an HOA expert, that they should know and understand Washington Homeowner Association law and not put the SRA at risk in order to guarantee payment of their consultant fees. Unlike most consultants, these consultants have embedded themselves into the association. I hope Mitch said, what Mitch said is true, that his work at the SRA is done and that they'll soon be gone. As Dr. Forkade so aptly noted at the last Town Hall meeting, ever since these consultants arrived, our community has changed and not for the better. It feels less like the cohesive and friendly community it was. And to boot, we have far more bureaucracy and far fewer funds in the SRA's accounts. Even if no additional funds are spent on consultants, we're concerned about how the board will spend our funds in the future. I'm looking at the mission statement and the goals, which include protecting our assets and communicating well. Those are admirable if they're actually followed. What is so frustrating and what compels me to speak time and time again is seeing how little weight the board gives to the membership's concerns. The board appears to be running the association as a private company rather than a homeowners association. The board is setting priorities and making decisions without listening and appropriately responding to the concerns expressed by the members who elected them. Again, I'd like to remind the board that under Washington law, they owe duty of care to us, to the members, and not to anyone else. Your primary duty is to protect our interests and our assets. The board certainly has discretion to spend SRA funds, but when it involves such a fundamental change in the way that things are going to operate and costs a tremendous amount of money, the community input should have been and should continue to be sought in the future. After all, these are our funds and it's our association that you're changing. Passports had to deal with actual and potential large expenditures, such as the Boundary Ridge stairs and the SRA facility. But those boards were always open to, about the issues and, and always sought community input. The board did not do so with respect to these consultants. The board discussed and approved the engagement of consultants in executive session and then slipped these significant costs into the budget. When there was pushback on the transfer fee, it was removed from the budget in the middle voting. The voting process last fall on the budget was a fiasco. And at least one homeowner has obtained a legal opinion that the budget was not properly approved under Washington law. Evidently, the board cares more about following Robert's Rules of Order rather than Washington law. In conclusion, I'm asking the board to do as they promised, that is to listen to us. In addition, I ask that they better communicate with us, be transparent, seek member input before spending significant amounts of our money and perform their statutory duty of care to, to protect our interests and our assets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Alec, who would you like to respond to? Peggy, they have three minutes.
I, I have one brief comment and that is that it's been stated several times that we discussed and decided on consultants in closed session. We did discuss the consultants in closed session as it pertained to personnel and legal issues. Any decision about engaging the consultants was made in open session and that's in the minutes. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Peggy.
Is there anyone else that, whom you would, I see Kurt's hand up. Kurt, you, there's two minutes? 32 seconds.
Yeah, I guess one response I would have is that you kind of broadened out the use of consultants beyond joint partners. I don't think yet you would agree that we cannot operate without professional services. I mean, we need legal help. We need some degree of HR help. And I'm wondering if it's even feasible for us to go back to the days when our executive director was doing all her executive director duties, managing the full staff, as well as doing all of the financial duties for the organization. It doesn't seem to me that that's a reasonable conclusion. So the idea that we'll never be able to hire consultants again is not a, is a non-starter in my view.
Thank you, Kurt. Alec, do you have anybody else? There's a minute 41.
No, I, I think we're fine.
Thank you. Laurie, who is next?
Peggy, or excuse me, Karen Swanson.
Karen, I don't see you yet.
I am on.
There you are. Okay, your time starts now.
Thank you. I just, you know, I started out with a bunch of questions that I'm sure that I can get answered at another time. But I just wanted to mention one thing, that this is a town hall. And the definition of a town hall is an official answers questions from members of the public. And I feel like there's been a lot of talking to us and not a lot of listening to us. That being said, everyone needs to understand that there were professionals needed to help Debbie and the team get up to speed. Whether or not that was the right way to do it or not, I don't know. But it wasn't shared with the community. The actual contract has not been shared. What are the deliverables? What are we expecting to see? So I just, really, I just want to state that I really hope that this can come back around to everyone being a community. We're all in this together. I've been coming here for 25 years. I love this area. I've lived here for three years. My parents have lived here for 20 years. I'm a half a mile away from them. I just really hope to see that everyone will listen to each other, understand each other. And maybe the next Town Hall meeting could possibly be a true question and answer instead of a board telling people what's happening. Because we've heard what's happening. We would like our chance to speak and ask questions. That's it.
Thank you very much, Karen. Alec, do you have somebody who would like to respond to Karen's comment?
Well, Kurt wants to speak, but I'm curious if Doug wants to speak as well.
I just, I'd just like to thank Karen for her, her comment there. And I think there is a very, very sensitive and listening board right now. I think that the message has been well received and it's been heard loud and clear. You know, the, the guys that are new on the, on the board have a hard time going back and, and being able to, to really make any changes to what happened. But I think if you look at what has occurred with our consultants over this past year, if, if you, if you amortize what we're, what, what we've spent over a five or six-year period, because this isn't something that we, you look at and you, you immediately say, oh yeah, we received X amount of dollars for that. Basically, is, is I see things, is I, I see that the, somebody said this is a small community, a small association. It's, it's 2,000 people. It's just, it's becoming a, a pretty good-sized little town. And we need to be able to run this so that the board isn't the, the, the group that is doing the work, that's doing the heavy lifting. We need to have staff developed that can do that. When you look at, oh, all you can find this and this and this all on the internet is fine. Yeah, you can find documents on the internet. But we did a whole lot more than create documents and create procedures. What we did is we really looked, took an inventory is, is to where there were deficiencies and where there were problems. I mean, just the NHOA issues is, is a really big issue that we need to get our arms around. And, and there's others that have been, I think, from, from what I see, we're very overwhelming for the board that we have. And I, I, I just think that we need to really beef up our, our, our staff, our management staff so that as we move into the, the next generation here, we've got things that are working for us rather than eroding year by year.
Kurt, would you like to add something?
But 45 seconds, Kurt.
Yeah, I just want to correct one inaccuracy in the statement and that the specific contract with joint partners is available on the website. And that contract does show the deliverables that are there. And we have had a report from joint partners at every board meeting and those minutes of those meetings are also available on the website. So we've tried to be transparent on the, on the joint partners involvement.
Thank you, Kurt. There's 14 seconds. Alec, anybody else?
No, I don't have anything to say that I could say in 14 seconds.
Okay. Laurie, who is next, please?
That would be Tom Michak.
Tom, I don't see you yet.
He's right below you. Now he's moved over.
Below me on some screen, but not mine.
He's also muted.
Oh, that's why I don't see you. Tom, could you?
How about now?
There you are. Your time starts now.
Hey, thank you. I just had a potpourri of, of things here. There's been the PPE equipment mentioned numerous times in the last two meetings. No one has given any examples. There was something about ergonomics. Are we talking about masks, steel-toe boots, chairs? What exactly PPE are we handing out? That's my one question. The second question is, you're spending 188,000 on, on the capital account, one year, 274 the other year, for a total of 462. What are we getting for that money?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the second part of the question.
We're spending 462,000 out of the capital account. I want to know what we're getting for it. What are we doing? I want to know what we're getting for it. What are we doing? What are we spending it on?
Joint Partners, turn the video on. Kurt, do you want to respond to that?
No, I want to finish my three minutes.
Yeah, you have two minutes and ten seconds left.
Right. So point three, the word benchmarking was mentioned. Professional services in the future were mentioned. I'm currently the Finance Committee Chair in the NHOA. About the same size in terms of revenue, not people. We actually have less people here. But we charge more and we spend more. You guys are spending fifty-three thousand for accounting, twelve thousand for auditing. We're spending six thousand for accounting, forty-five hundred for auditing. The way we're getting that done is the Finance Committee oversees everything. So we have a guy here, he looks at everything that is being everything that's being spent, this guy sees it. We have a guy who is reviewing the accounting for it, that just oversee it. We do our own tax return. We don't do anything else. So I don't know if we can get to those numbers, but if you're talking benchmarking, you're significantly over in accounting fees. I believe Burgeby Village, next door to you, does not pay twelve thousand bucks in audit fees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom, Alec, who would you like to have respond?
Mitch would like to say a word.
Okay, there's three minutes total, starting now.
I won't need much. Hello, Tom. PPE, personal protective equipment, that was your question. Our first observation of workers at SRA, we observed workers in pouring rain, wearing street clothes with no work boots, no gloves, no rainwear, crawling on top of a dump truck, working to empty that truck out. And when we checked, their shoes did not have the right amount of tread. They didn't have protection from elements. And so we made sure the next day, those employees had the proper gloves, proper helmets, proper rain gear, and proper work shoes. That's personal protective equipment. That also goes for the office staff. A good portion of all claims from employee injuries, believe it or not, are ergonomic. The employees did not have ergonomic chairs. They didn't have ergonomic workstations. And they were not set up to prevent office injuries. We did have that evaluated. That's what we did with PPE. And that's where a significant cost of all the expenses for lost time and injuries occur in businesses. I can answer that part. Kurt, I'll leave you to talk about funds and the capital.
Kurt, you have one and a half minutes.
All right, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in spending on capital from the restricted reserve. I'm not sure where that comes from. I see in the 2021 budget, we're going to spend a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. A hundred and five thousand dollars of that is for roads, a hundred and sixty-one, or sorry, six thousand one hundred and eighty for curbs.
It came from your presentation today. In today's presentation, you mentioned a hundred eighty-eight thousand.
Excuse me, Tom.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're talking about two different years then, Tom. The hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars was is what was spent in 2020, not 2021. I thought you mentioned 2021. So we're talking about the wrong thing. We did spend a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in 2020, but I'm still not sure where the four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar figure came from.
Well, one eighty-eight was the one year, and then you said two seventy-four. That's going to be spent in this year. Is that not the case?
No, we're only going to spend a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty. But we do have to add to that a fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the payment on a tractor, which we have a no-interest loan on. And we also have to pay the capital or the mortgage paydown on the SRA Center, which is about thirty-five thousand dollars. But that still adds up to much less than the four hundred and sixty-two thousand, so I'm not sure where that came from.
Kurt, your time is up. I'm sorry, because it was going back and forth. I didn't do the thirty-second. I was asked a question about whether it was permissible for joint partners to respond. And the answer is yes, because it is up to the presiding officer to determine who responds to answers. So Laurie, who is next?
Tom Michak was given an additional three minutes by Paul Atchison, if he wishes to use them.
Tom, do you wish to use it? That would be yourself directly.
I don't have any more questions, but like, we're going down in cash by, what, three hundred grand or something? So the two seventy-four seems to be the number you guys said. You know, if it's one twenty-three plus fourteen, then I misunderstood. But if our cash is going from nine hundred to six hundred, that's three hundred thousand bucks.
May I interject here to say, I think we have moved into what we specifically are not to do. And it says that the member speaking is making a presentation, not conducting a discussion or debate. That refers to the board or the member. And I think that we've done a presentation, a response. And Tom, if you have some more presentation, you do have some more time.
So my presentation is that the answer given does not jive, because the answer given was that we're going to spend a hundred twenty-three thousand plus fourteen on the tractor. But yet the cash is going from nine oh nine to six thirty-seven, which is closer to three hundred grand. So that's what I'm presenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make one comment in response to Tom? Because I think his numbers for accounting services are probably pretty accurate. I don't think anybody on the board anticipates spending fifty-three thousand dollars for accounting for 2021. And as a matter of fact, we are in the process of gathering bids from accounting and auditing firms. And I suspect we're going to be able to cut our previous bills in half. So I'll leave that on the table. Budgets are estimates of where we go for the year, and we're constantly trying to do better in every single line item, and so we shall continue.
Thank you, Alec. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now ten after eight. This meeting was, I believe, scheduled for ninety minutes. It's now gone for over two hours. Alec, are you wanting... Laurie, how many people are there still on the list?
We have Henry Forkade on the list, and then April Hashimoto has asked for an additional three minutes.
April was used six minutes, and it states very clearly in the directions that no member may speak longer than six minutes total. So April, I'm terribly sorry, but the rules that I am asked to enforce say you did get your time limit. So the other person was, sorry, Laurie.
That would be Henry Forkade?
Henry Forkade, okay. And then if there are no others, I think this then will be the last presentation. Henry, are you there?
Yes, but he's muted.
Unmute, Henry.
Unmuting again. Am I on video?
Yes, you are. Thank you. Your time is now starting.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been quite an experience, both of these meetings, although the time spent in this meeting duplicated almost entirely everything that was said in the first meeting by the presentation of the board members. And I think that was way overdone. And to say that the community is overspending their time, I think should be a matter for looking at in the future. And I hope the third board meeting isn't going to include all those lectures again. Secondly, I'd like to say thank you to Debbie and Laurie, especially for their many, many years of management and almost acting as the CEOs of the organization. And I remember being taught at one point on one of the boards that the board's main function was to hire and fire the CEO. And their function was to ask questions, to make sure that those who were executing were carrying it out in a manner that they approved of. Next, I'd like to thank Peggy and Buzz again for their on-the-mark comments about overspending and underperformance. And only say that there's a large number of people that have been signing letters who agree with that statement. And then I'd like to go on to one thing I picked up on the repetition here on the mission statement, as far as becoming the premier organization in the Northwest. I know that's a great word, premier, as is preeminent in some of the other mission statements that I've been involved in forming in the past. But it's very hard to define, isn't it? In fact, there's no very good publication of who's the preeminent or premier organization in the Northwest. So I think you need to detail exactly how you're going to define that. And then finally, I want to say as far as the two new board members. That's wonderful that there's five people that have volunteered already and maybe more, and that they'll be elected on Thursday. I'd like to know who is electing them and whether it's the people on the board. Just, or is it going back where it should, to the members of the community as far as electing who is going to represent them on the board? And I'll yield the rest of my time to the board members to try to answer that question.
Alec, if I... Thank you very much, Michael. I should let you know, Michael, if you needed more time, Jim Simpson has given you time.
That was Henry.
Henry, sorry. Henry, I, as Chair of the Election Committee, I will tell you that the bylaws state that in the event of a vacancy on the board, the people volunteer, they're certified by the staff as meeting the qualifications, their names are submitted to the board, and it is the board who elects. That has been in the bylaws a long time. And it still is. It is the board who does that. Pardon me?
The thing that we fill out every year as far as electing members really doesn't elect them?
It does. Excuse me, it does. That is the annual election for the annual general meeting for the board for the, you know, the terms, of the two-year terms. When a vacancy occurs, it's a procedure that is the difference, and it has been in there. Alec, did you have anybody else to respond, just being the last speaker?
No, I just wanted to say to Henry that it's an absolute that the board is elected by the membership. But if we have a board member who can no longer serve, for whatever reason, health, moving, whatever it happens to be, the process is for the board to submit names that they know might be interested in serving. The community can submit names. They are vetted. They are held to be in good standing. The election committee collects biographical information from them. And there is a secret ballot at the board meeting. So we don't know what any of the others voted. It's independently tabulated, and it comes back to us and tells us who the first candidate was, who the second candidate was. But we never see the votes. So that person elected in that manner serves only until the next general meeting, which in 2021 will be sometime in October. So these will be short terms, and then we will elect board members again at that point.
Alec, I turn it back to you for the conclusion.
I want to thank you. We did hear what you said. We have, in essence, done what you said. These town halls are an effort to communicate, communicate, communicate better. I think it was Henry who mentioned that the first and the second were duplicates. That's how they were billed, so that we could get the most possible people. And in fact, we actually moved the second one so that we weren't competing with a golf club event tomorrow night for St. Patrick's Day. So we've done our best, and we hear what you're saying. In a gesture of reciprocity, I would hope that you hear what we say and don't reduce it down to simple Googled forms. Our process here is to train ourselves to the place where we are a sustainable organization that can govern itself and manage itself, because that's what the community said they wanted. And the cart is, as I see it, behind the horse. We had to understand what our issues were and how to deal with them. We didn't have that knowledge, and going on the internet and Googling a form wasn't going to give us that knowledge. We were unaware, as late as last year, that there was even a trade association for homeowners associations. So we have reached out. We have benchmarked. We have vetted. If you want to Google HOA crisis managers, you can find about four or five consulting firms if you go to Google. Two or three of them are in California. A couple of them are in Missouri. None of them specialize in crisis management. Most of them are actually management companies or specialize in property development. So I think we've done a decent job. I know there are people that disagree with that. I grew up in a consulting firm. I know what value there is in knowledge. Our job here was to transfer as much knowledge to this board as we could in six months and then hopefully reap the results and the returns from that investment over the next five or 10 years. It is unfortunate that everybody out in the community cannot see what this board sees day to day in terms of improvements, settlements of lawsuits, resolutions of mechanical repairs. The one issue that bothers me quite a bit is that in fifteen years of our requirement to provide a geotechnical report for Drayton Hillside Two, we've done it once. It's required to be submitted to the city. I believe the city is a bit negligent in that as well. But it is written in the plat, and it's never been done. So it's those kind of document issues that we're trying to get up on top of. We're in the process of producing an overlay map that will show you all of your documents on your property. Will show you all of the liabilities and responsibilities of your homeowners' association and how it's organized and when it was last filed. All of that is in process. And I'm not going to label it fair or unfair at this point. But I think unless you can see what Steve Geisel sees and what Doug Woods sees and what Steve Haynes sees and what Bill McNally sees and what Patricia Olivero sees and what I see, you can't really make a fair judgment about value for cost. And I'm seeing value every single day. We just settled a thirty thousand dollar argument on Friday with the help of outside counsel and the consultants. So I think those things, those two lines will come together as time goes by. But for tonight, I'd say, thanks. We did what we set out to do tonight. I will state once again, we are not renewing the consulting contract. The consultants don't want to renew the consulting contract. And so... Whether you have a collection of people who object to that imaginary fear, because it is now imaginary. I I think is important, but I think we're there. I think we've done what you. Demanded of us, and thank you for attending. Anybody else on the board have anything to say, or shall we say good night?
Let's say good night.
Good night, all. Thank you very much.